All right. Thank you for coming to the January School Board meeting. We are, let's, can we start with the pledge and then we'll go jump right in there?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. So before we open, do we do it before we do public comment or do we open public comment first?
You can do either and just be interrupting them if they've got questions. We want to do public comment after.
Yeah, we'll do public comment after. All right, so the first agenda item is the meeting on the solar panel, or the solar panel presentation, I guess. And so that's a joint meeting with Budcom. And so Ron's gonna present. And I think this, the goal here is just for you all to see the full presentation, right? Jack and I attended as community members, but there weren't a, I think that that's the goal.
Right here. It's great. So I think it's well over a year that we've started discussing what solar power would mean for Sweetsie School, for the town. There's a lot of different reasons we came together to discuss this. As a school, we love the educational aspect, but clean, environmentally friendly, clean source of energy, renewable and sustainable, cost effective. There's installation costs, but after the, and we'll discuss the savings that we can see on our energy bill moving forward. Educational opportunities. It's gonna be a fantastic thing to, for the kids to be involved in seeing what could be built on top of our school and what that means for them and their future. Energy independence. These are a few of our members here. Rick Lebrecht, Letty, Kate, myself, and Dr. Andres. We had several meetings where we were kind of getting quotes from different companies and coming together. Rick was extremely helpful in kind of navigating us through all these different options as far as the data that's necessary to make a decision based on saving money and in building something like this. Well, it's nice that we had the solar power in town to kind of compare that process to what we're proposing here. Chris, go ahead.
Sure. So we, we put it out to multiple companies to get a quote. We have two that gave us quotes for this year as well as last year. As you can see, Company One came in at $713,000 and Company Two came in at $849,000. Pretty much the same size project, Company One, just a little bit, a little bit smaller. But again, the purpose was to be able to take all of the energy we use here, be able to give it back, and then have a cost savings down the road. So that was where we're at. Any official proposal, if we get it to a bond vote, would ask for a formal RFP. So therefore hopefully drive the price a little bit differently because it'd be more competitive knowing other people are gonna bid on it. So those are the two biggest ones that we had and they, they took all of our information on how much we were spending on energy, the cost, the size of the school. We had to take into consideration the, the condition of the roof as well. Because we're not gonna put anything on the roof unless we know we can be up there for 25 years. We don't want something up there for 10 years and have to take it down, fix the roof. So we do know that in our, our project line for next year, we do have some patches up on the roof on top of the gymnasium that we would do as a prep work before we put any solar power up there. Ron, can you just go back one side? I just wanna, just a reminder of timeline. So we're here, love to get information. We've already met with two stakeholder groups. We met with the teachers to give some feedback and information to help us continue to transform these slides if and when we get to the public hearing. And then also we met with parents. We offered two times for parents to come and give us, or community members to come in and get it. And then obviously tonight here with the budget committee. One thing we added to the slide, we have until February 26th to be able to have a public hearing on a bond. That's per the RSA. So anything over $100,000, you have to have a public hearing on the bond to be able to get to the next step.
As a positive and barriers, right off the bat, it's 30% project paid back with investment tax credit. Energy cost savings in future years. 50 to 60,000 annual savings on the bill in 10 years. You'll see the spreadsheet in a minute. Greener school and community, that's one of our board goals. Instruction and learning associated with this project. Obviously, some of the barriers of maintenance and future budgets. The upfront costs for this. And any burden on taxpayers who have fixed income, or will leave in the next 10 years. I know this is gonna be hard to see from the back.
Yeah, so this is the breakout. Again, thanks to Richard Lebrecht, and he'd be here today except he's already running the Energy Commission concurrently right now. But he was able to take the numbers on what we spend, take, based on the kilowatt hours, based on both the different arrays. So you would see the cost savings. You see we're in the negative based on the bond payments in the first 10 years. And after 10 years, you start to see the savings at the $49,000 range that this array would be able to get to. Again, this energy would be taken in throughout the months, then be put out for other people to use, and then that would become our cost savings. One of the great questions that came up during our teacher and parent meeting was, what, how much money has been saved at the high school on their array? This year for 2023, and remember, it was a very large rain year, much more than the years past. They, they saved $15,000 on an array that's about a fifth of the size of what we'd be putting up there. So $15,000 in electrical savings at the high school on their array. And again, that array was not built to be able to cover the entire size of the high school.
This is an inverter replacement fee, and that's in year 15 for $25,000. That's something we know well ahead of time. So that'd be something we would have to budget for.
So here, we just gave you an example. With either of these projects, we get 30% tax credit. You don't get that paid right off the bat. So again, if we put this out to bond, we'd have to bond the whole $713,000 or $715,000 here. After about, in our research, anywhere from six to eight months, that tax credit comes back. So it becomes a revenue to us that we'd be able to use in the future to be able to use as payments towards this. So reducing what we'd have to be able to do that. However, if we did the bond, we gave you different options on what it would look like over a three to a 10-year bond and the cost that we'd need per year. What you don't see here is that first year, you don't have a large cost because it's only the principal, you're not paying the interest till year two. So that first year, and again, we break this out for the public hearing to give it to you, it's very minimal. But then you see the total interest that would be used over the, the life of the years of bond. So that's a question, how many years would we want to bond? What's reasonable? What would fit with the community in regards to, to numbers if this project passes? And then we did the same thing on the second year, a second quote that we got, you know, at $850,000 of what the total cost would be again with the tax credit coming back. So again, 30% of 850, a larger tax credit, but again, more upfront cost of us.
Does the cost per year include the interest and principal?
Yes. Yep.
So how does the 30% come back to us?
So you put that, after we get the whole project bonded, we'd send that information in, get it to the federal government. Federal government gives you a check. It's about six to eight months after you get that showing the, the whole project. We get a, a check for that amount and that come to us as a revenue.
You get a check for $240,000, it's not open.
Yep.
Sure. General, general question. Do you have this presentation just in the form of a handout?
I could send it to you so you could see it if you leave your-
Sure, do I just leave you?
Sure, just leave your email out and I'd be glad to send it to you. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you go back to the spreadsheet, please? So the right-hand column. I presume that's the net outflow each year. So the taxpayers, that's what the taxpayers will be absorbing in the early years and they'll be benefiting from it in the later years. Is that a correct assumption?
That'd be correct.
So when you look at the bond payments, 100,000, which is the first thing that you tend to see, that's not really what's gonna fall to the taxpayers each year. It's really 40,000 or 45,000.
Well, we have to do, we have to pay the bond based on whatever that payment is. So I think it's broken out by a year of $111,000, right?
That has to be paid, yes, but it's offset by-
Correct. Energy savings.
Just wanted to be clear.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, so these numbers here is 40,002.
Touchscreen.
I did not even touch the screen. 40,000 in the top number. Then there's that, that big check that comes in, 41, 41.4, 41.8, 42.2. But we can definitely make this available. I'm glad to print it up tonight.
Sure.
Like me to do that.
Either way. So the credit offsets about five of the early years.
And Molly, we had talked about if there's a way we can get it and then be able to use that as subsequent payments over the year? If we were separate account possibly with that money coming back in as revenue?
So the money would be coming in as revenue and that would be for the current fiscal year though? So that would offset your amount you have to-
We could hold a public hearing and accept that money.
But you have to, you can accept it over multiple years.
No, but you could put it in, you could put it in a capital reserve or something and expect it for a couple of years.
Well, we would have to not plan for the revenue. So in the fall, we set the revenues on the MS24. If we set planned revenue of a credit coming in, then it would go to offset the tax rate that year. If you don't set it on the 24 and it's taken in as unplanned revenue, kinda like we do for impact fees, then you could hold a public hearing and put it to some, where you want.
Could you put it in a, in a fund? Like a trust fund that you could then withdraw on each year?
That's what we're looking at doing. That's the question.
What could we do in, I know the town does like an ETF? Because I know we had also talked about if we end up with, if we overproduce, we talked about putting it in to cover like maintenance fees or something.
Yeah, I'd have to, my computer actually just died, but I'd have to go back to the, the emails where we were talking about that. But yes, if you, it is unanticipated revenue, you would hold a public hearing. I just have to check on the capital reserve versus accepting it in. We're there. Yeah, go ahead.
Those, that number on the right inside is net of the electrical savings. I can't read those numbers. What's that like?
Do you wanna come closer?
55 or so?
Well, the first, the first year says 55,000. It just keeps going down about $400 every year?
Okay. We budgeted 75 this year. What's our run? I mean, is it close to, is it 75? Or is it lower than that? Because prior to yours, we were having 34.
Do you know what? I don't, I didn't print it out. Where's your big binder?
Like, you always have everything here.
Yeah, so if we have to pay for electricity, it costs us more than if we make it, is really what it comes down to. Plus, I think we still have to pay, I don't know what that flat fee is, like it's a demand charge or something. You have to pay no matter what.
So we've encumbered to this point 25,524 dollars for electricity.
And we've spent 16,475. The budget is 75,000 and so actuals to date are 16,475 and we've encumbered 25,000 with a remaining expense of 33,000. Now, as bills come in, we adjust the encumbrances up and down. But right now, that's what we have encumbered based off of the bills we've received.
Since July 1st.
Since July 1st.
And Molly, correcting from Ron, but didn't our rate change in November to a higher rate based on what we had previously?
I don't know when the rate changed, but we will be adjusting the encumbrances when we receive that bill.
Because we had a, a long-term, like locked-in rate that we, that we earned a long-
I believe that ended on November 30th, so December 1st, we were starting to get the higher rate of, for electricity.
Yeah, and we probably don't have that bill yet, so we'll have to adjust the encumbrances needed. We made the budget knowing that there was unknowns with the rate change.
If, if the town goes, enters into the electric cooperative thing, is the school participating in that?
Can we?
I think that's the next step. So I think the first step is getting community power to the town for the residents. And I think the Energy Committee will work with standard power to then move, move on to other ways that we can save money as a community.
So not right away?
Including schools, including other energy providers.
So is Eversource your source of electricity now?
Do we have a rate?
Eversource is not our supplier.
But they're the-
They're the distributor. I don't know who the supplier is.
I don't know.
So Eversource has threatened to decrease their rate in February, March, or whatever significant, 30% or something like that. How does that impact your spreadsheet here?
So that's where I'd love to have Richard here.
Sounds like they don't use Eversource though.
Yeah, Richard's the one that manipulated all the numbers. So he took in usage based on the cost of it. So I can't answer that, but I can definitely get that in.
And I think that the way that Richard described it is that, you know, if you go and you have a solar company give you a quote, then they will give you a quote based on like the highest rate recently. And they'll be like, look how quickly you're gonna pay off your things, right? And, and so he didn't wanna use, and they did that. I mean, they did give us those quotes with this, like, how quickly you're gonna pay it off. He tried to do a much more realistic look at the, and, and again, we can't speak to it exactly, but a much more realistic look as to energy prices go up and down, right? And so sometimes, you know, last, it was like, went up to like 20, you know, it was like some ridiculous, it's been ridiculously high through Eversource recently.
Yeah, it never went down. It just kept going.
Yeah, right. And, and right, the way that they quoted it, basically, they said, look how fast it's been going up. It's at 22 cents per kilowatt hour. That means that in 10 years, it's gonna be 55 cents per kilowatt hour. And he's like, that's not the way electricity works, right? Electricity goes up and down. So that's, he tried to make this a much more realistic view that he could speak much more to. But it's, it's not just that, like, look how, you know, energy prices just go up and up and up because it's, because they do go up and down.
I mean, the short answer would be if he used an average of 10 or 15% and, and energy rates are 8%, it's gonna extend the ROI on the solar by whatever percentage is different from the, the rate that he used. We just don't know.
Yeah. When did you do the spreadsheet? I mean, that would give us an idea of what the cost was.
That was in our December meeting. That was the final, so pretty recently then.
Go ahead.
Are there caps in play in terms of how much energy could be sold back to the grid at given times of the year? I'm specifically thinking about sort of the unique nature of a school. Energy production months in the summer are probably highest, whereas energy consumption is lowest just because of simply not having so many bodies in the building on any given day. I'm not sure how that factors into the equation here at all.
Yeah, we didn't hear of any caps because that was the big thing, where we're not having kids in school in July and that we're able to generate a ton because the, that's where we get our most benefit. But caps were not part of the discussion from any of the companies that we had heard from.
That's good to hear.
So you have two quotes. How are you going to go about comparing the quotes? The dollar difference is easy enough, but the quality issues, workmanship, quality of equipment that's being installed, ability to stand behind what they've done, how are you going to about evaluating those issues?
Both the companies that submitted have done projects this size on schools or municipalities of this nature. They both have very good reputations. Richard looked into both of them and they both had stellar recommendations for their work.
So he regards them of equal standing?
And we'll get more information for the full RFP, right?
Correct.
Will this presentation be given in any other forums in the coming months?
The only one that we have to is if we go forward and be at a public hearing. So because for the bond to go forward on the ballot, we would do it at that public hearing. So we did some in, in December, put it out there, invited community members. So we're kinda at that timeline where this is with the Budget Committee.
Would it be at the Budget Committee public hearing or a separate one possibly?
Separate. We'd have to have a public hearing on this, this.
So this is the fourth time it's been presented in the past four weeks, five weeks?
Oh, okay, just. Was it widely advertised? I mean, I know you've given presentations in the, in the recent past. That part I get. But how was the public notified?
It was on the marquee at least once.
Yeah, it was out front.
It's on the marquee. It's been in the newsletters that I send out. Those newsletters are also on our school website. But as far as, we didn't mail anything out to the Brentwood community.
I can't remember if I put it in the newsletter or not. I feel like-
I think you put it on Facebook.
I think I put it elsewhere, but I can't, I, I would have to look it up. I know I put Esther's meeting on Facebook, but-
We announced it at the Select Board as well.
Yeah.
It was publicly noticed in multiple locations.
I have a question. Is this, is this plan similar to what the town did in terms of like a lease agreement? Or this is a full purchase? Okay, that's what I got the sense. Okay, so it's not like a loan program.
We originally looked at the lease option, but then we wouldn't get the tax credit.
Gotcha.
Whoever did the lease, we get the tax credit. So that's why after a year of looking at the research, we said, why would we give someone $240,000 to do this for us? So that's when the decision of the board-
I mean, we started off with a presentation over a year ago with revision coming in and giving us a full presentation. And then we put the committee together and have been doing the work. I, I say we very loosely. Not me. The committee has been doing work for, for the past year. So, and you know, it is, you know, for what it's worth, it is our board goal to move the school towards a more green, you know, footprint. So-
Also saving the community loads of money.
Yeah, and it's super cool for the kids. I mean, like, for me, that, I, that, that should not be lost in this. That they come to a school that has solar panels on their roof and they learn how it impacts their world and they learn how it works. And that, when revision presented, like, I don't, who knows if they'll be the vendor or not, but they actually have like a curriculum that comes with the, with the project. So.
And as far as speaking to like the presentations to the community, I mean, I think it's really important. We want, we want people to know that we think it's a really good and, and fiscally responsible thing. It's not like we're trying to hide it. And so that's why we've been trying to do these things because I think, you know, the town has been, the town's project has proven how, how successful it can be. This is a bigger project than the town. We use more energy than the town, so it's, it's a bigger kind of cost apparent, but also a bigger savings because every year we use more energy than the town, right? We're spending like tens of thousands of dollars to the electric company, which we could then make ourselves and be getting back, you know? So it's, that's the idea behind the fiscally responsible part of it, you know? And then we also have this environmental goal and, and educational goals behind it.
And I would also say for community, so we do publish articles in the Brentwood Newsletter for whoever reads that every month. And it is on our notes to have this along with our budget in for January 15th deadline. So that's the early February newsletter, which would be, you know, ahead of any public hearing. So.
Well, thank you to everyone who was involved in putting this together because it's awesome for the community.
One thing I would like to add to this, if we can, is if I was coming in, I didn't know much about the process or how we're funding our schools or our town, I'd wanna know, what are we talking, what's this gonna cost my household? My house is worth this. What am I paying extra to get this investment? And I know I'm gonna save money in a few years or whatever, but is this going to be a huge burden on me? Or is it a reasonable burden to do something that's gonna eventually make us money?
Are you asking me to tell you that number?
No, I'm, I'm thinking we should put it-
I did, but didn't have it. This didn't-
As a whole group, I'm just having an open conversation about how I wanna-
I think that would be helpful to be like, okay, is this $1,000 a year or $15 a year?
Right.
Well, if it's, if it's $40 a year, that's, that's about $24 per property in town.
That's why you're in the Budget Committee.
Well, and I think the 30% rebate is just so huge. Like you said, it practically covers the first five years of payments. So, and that's a huge, huge opportunity. And that just came out, what, last year? That's when we started talking about this, when they changed the federal guidelines, that it could go direct to the consumer. So I think that's a huge, huge selling point. You really only paying about half as much over those 10 years as you would have without that rebate. It's a huge difference for taxpayers.
So, I, I don't know, Jack, if this question's for you or for Chris, but, so for next steps, what do we need to do? We need you guys to take a vote on whether you recommend it? Is that what? Right, I mean, we'll put, it would be our warrant article. And so typically, our warrant articles say whether you are in agreement with us or not.
Or they're recommended or not.
Recommended or not. So-
Wouldn't we just present at the same time we present the other warrant articles?
I'm, I'm asking a question. By no means, so-
We, we really can't review it until we see it as a warrant article.
Okay.
And, you know, it's informal discussions really to this point. You know, Rick's involvement, I think, was important. I mean, we're ready to present a warrant article.
So- So, we need to vote?
You just need to give some direction on what you'd like for a dollar figure?
For the dollar figure in a warrant article. And then the warrant article goes to the budget committee for review. With the other ones. What date are you reviewing our budget, our warrant articles?
We're waiting for you to tell us.
This is why we're doing this ad hoc meeting in the middle of, okay.
If I may, the warrant articles don't do anything to you or to sit, so...
Due to you or due to the town?
Due to the town.
Town.
So we obviously wouldn't be reviewing any or all of the warrant articles until after that date.
After they're due to the town, okay.
But this will be a school warrant article, not the town warrant article.
Correct.
Okay.
So are you saying we could approve those separately from the town ones?
You'll be preparing them separately from the...
Yeah, I mean, we have our other warrant articles that we're going to review tonight, so we just have to add this one.
Would the warrant articles say what term you're recommending?
The bond schedule? I think they would say, I think would say we would be planning on borrowing up to an amount. But the paybacks, like the three... I think we would pick the number of years, I think, also level payment. I don't think the warrant article would say the number of years of the bond schedule, but we can also word it however we want. With the DRA recommendation language and modifying it.
Does anybody have thoughts on what they would recommend, from a budgetary standpoint? How many years to do the, like, do it shorter, so there's less interest? Or do it longer, so it's less impact?
It ranged from like 50, five to 100 and...
I mean, it's kind of like six to one, half dozen the other, right? The, you spend more in interest doing a longer term, but it helps level the tax impact over a longer number of years. Shorter would impact a lot of people who might not be here for like years five, six, seven, eight, to reap the benefits, but you spend less in interest.
But wouldn't, I think that the tax credit would play a big role in making that decision.
Well, and that's a question, like, there was the interest on those set years, but does that, doesn't take into account, or like the amount owed for, doesn't take into account the energy savings? Like the reduction in expense, right? That's just the loan itself. So the one was like $240 for a year for three years, that doesn't take into account the reduction in expense or not?
So I understand that, as in general. So, so do you have a recommendation, as in general, being...
Fiscally, it's nice to not spend as much interest, but I'm curious for the public.
So I would support longer, because then it would be, the duration of the debt would be tied more with the operational lifetime, lifetime of the asset. The other thing, the warrant, can we add language around use of the tax credit?
Like in how, like, if it went into a fund to...
I don't know if we could mandate that. We could have a warrant article setting up that fund.
Establishing that fund.
Whether it's an ETF or a capital reserve, so that whenever we get that check, it's ready.
Because the board at the time would have to vote on accepting, so we can't vote for a future board.
Yes, we can't, we can't.
Vote for, oh, in two years, that board has to do this.
Well, I mean, and we're already going to be requesting the start of a new fund, so it would be a request of two new funds plus the bond.
And can you have a fund with no money in it?
Yeah.
Like, can we create a fund without putting anything in it?
We could put $1 in it.
I actually have a scheduled call with bond counsel for a different bond on Thursday, so I'm happy to ask those questions.
Is there a table with interest that maybe Lady could provide later or something?
So, we have actually the full schedules from the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank for all of the choices, so yes, I can email those to the budget committee. Right, I have all those.
You should have all of them, yep. If the board wants, I can actually put this presentation up next to our minutes on our site with all of the different bond bank schedules.
Yeah, actually, that would be great, because that's anyone in the public that wants them.
Sharon's really good at that, so tomorrow I can ask her to create that. So right on our agenda where this is posted, we'll have the presentation with all of the schedules. You'll see the interest rates.
I mean, it's a good, I don't know who we're just talking to. About the tax credit coming back. And I do agree, Anthony, about the payments being, like, doing a longer bond term, and the payments kind of matching the life of how long it's going to take to see ROI, net zero on the investment. But having the tax credit come back, I think shortening the payment term, you could use the tax credit to help increase that interest. And then you would be saving potentially upwards of $50,000 in interest. Because I think a total of 10 years is like 150 grand in interest.
But what I was saying with interest, people though, is that we could look at, and to your point, the spreading of, because depending on the differential, it might be because of the variance, and, you know, and the fact, the short term is going to be larger, whereas if we postpone it, it's going to smooth it out. And the loss of interest is not going to be huge. And meanwhile...
But perception...
Right, but also meanwhile, I don't know what are the rules in investing, but we could look at what we're, so essentially right now we have an expense, right? So that expense is going away. Then we have three years of payments that have been covered by 3% credit that we didn't get from the federal government. That's going to cover that. So we have still that quote-unquote expense that was there that could not be made up and invested if we have that, right? And again, at this point, we can invest if at some point over 5%, which is making money and adding that interest. But there are rules probably about investments in terms of, but any government bonds literally going at 5%.
What do we do?
It's your call. Here in their support, it's just what we...
What we want, what we do. So we, as a board, need to just make sort of a decision, and then you need to put that into a warrant article.
Yep, and then we'll have to post, we'll contact the bond counsel to let them know that we want a bond. We'll have to have a public hearing on that. So we'll post that immediately, based on the RSAs.
That's the one that has to be done by February 26.
Yeah, we gotta post, there's a timeline to post before that, but that's the last day we could actually have a bond hearing.
But just to be clear, it can't be at the same public hearing that the budget committee is having for all of the rest of the budget. Or can it?
It's a separate meeting.
It has to be a separate meeting?
Yes, because it's on a bond, the RSA is anything over $100,000, that's a separate bond hearing.
Okay.
Have you had any other feedback on term? Like, I would hate to, like, I don't know, in my experience, if this is going to happen, but I would hate to have the board pick a term, or like have it, have to have it in a warrant, and the warrant not pass because of the term.
I don't think bonds historically have terms on them, I think it just says the amount. Because I think the last one was like something for the town that I saw, or the, actually, it's probably the middle school project, right? Where it didn't say what the terms were, it said this is the total amount we're going to borrow.
Correct, it just said, the article says the amount, the total amount of the project, but then at the bottom it says to further raise and appropriate this amount for the current fiscal year. And the first amount from the current fiscal year, it was the same on all bond schedules.
Because I think no matter what you choose, like, to Chris's point, to Lena's point, you could do it in a way that doesn't have to look like that, doesn't have to look like so much interest. I'm sure there's ways, one, to save money on the interest, whether you do a short term or...
So we just need to have a warrant article that's, is...
Requesting the money.
Requesting the money, and we need to currently have that request be to cover, I mean, we think they'll come in, the RFP will come in lower, probably, but we have to have it cover at least one of these two figures. So I guess like, my gut instinct is to put it the higher figure there.
Because we can...
Because we don't have to then take a bond out for that, right? We would take it out for what we actually need.
So the bond is what we'd request, the total amount is what we'd have to do back?
But if we say we want to have a bond of up to $850,000, and we only need $800,
we can pay back the 50, right?
Do we just not take out the 50? Like, do we only take out the 800?
Well, basically, what you put on the warrant article, DRA is going to use that as part of the calculation of the tax rate. So I believe you would have to know the amount. And I can again ask bond counsel on Thursday.
But you, we won't have the...
I thought the verbiage was like not to exceed, but maybe...
Like, are you saying, can we ask for an amount, but not take the bond out until the RFPs come back?
Yeah, because we're not going to take the bond out until we have...
Yeah, because like conservation land that we passed, the 3 million, we have never taken a penny out, and so it hasn't impacted the tax rate yet.
But if you only needed 2.7, would you still have to take the 3?
No, because they're taking it bit by bit.
Yeah, we could take $200,000 at a time.
It's just permission to appropriate when needed.
Up to.
Yeah.
Up to.
So I guess that's what I would...
Say up to 100, 850. Does someone have an opinion about this?
I do.
Okay, go, yes, I do.
I motion that we should have a warrant article with whatever language DRA wants, that says that we would like to take out a bond for up to $850,000 for the middle school.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 4-0.
Do we need to now approve that official language, or does that count?
We can do that in our meeting, so this is more to get information, but now we'll put it in, work through that through our meeting.
Okay.
What meeting?
Our, the meeting that's about to start.
Oh, okay. I don't know what meeting I'm in, I'm just here.
There's a question.
Do you, go ahead, Jack.
Will you have a full assessment of the roof's condition before we come forward with this?
Yes, we already have that, actually.
We've already done it.
But we can bring that when we do the public hearing, yeah.
Repair.
All right, thank you, guys. Thanks for accommodating our not very flexible schedule and joining us here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Open public comment?
Yes. So, what this is doing is ruining my one-hour meetings, but...
That doesn't count, that doesn't count. Your meeting's about to start.
All right, so, public comment is now open at 6:44.
Because we're officially starting.
We are officially starting the school board meeting. Anybody have public comment?
I love Swayze.
Good, glad to hear that.
Make sure we put in the official minutes.
Yes.
Thank you, thanks for all the...
All right, so we will just keep going.
Can we just walk through the rest of the board?
Yep, so we have approval of the minutes, which Brian had a couple of very small edits, which I don't, you have those, so...
Mary Bart Library.
I got that one.
Yes, he did have that.
That was the only one I had.
The what?
The Bart Library.
Mary Bart Library.
So his section 5.5 changed Bart Library to Bartlett Library. Section 7.1, it says FORA to 4A. That's all he had for the minutes.
At the end of section 6.2, there's a sentence about inflation, with inflation there would be an increase, and the health insurance has increased. I think that's actually the GMR, not health insurance for sure.
GMR increase.
Yeah.
Yes, a GMR, which has increased.
6.4?
It's 6.2, it's the last paragraph in 6...
No, going to the next one.
Oh.
Oh.
What would you like to change about 6.2?
Says the goal is to come up with a vision statement in May, June, not Mary.
Mary, June. Missed, Brian missed that, you'll have to call him out on that.
Way to go, wrong way to go.
All right, anything else?
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Reports, safety and security? No updates, all right. So I have superintendent evaluation, so... Ron, do you want a copy of this?
I have a digital copy.
You have it, okay, all right. So, we have met a good number of times, and I am pleased with what we have right now. But basically, what we did was, the first attempt was using the leadership competency map. And then we tried to also incorporate the feedback from the superintendent's search survey last year. And so, like, we had kind of come up with areas that we wanted to evaluate, so our student-focused areas, administrative leadership, and then it was like really clear in the superintendent's search last year that like the attributes of a leader, not just sort of what their, you know, financial management was like, but, you know, that they were student-centered, they were collaborative. And so we wanted those incorporated. And so, basically, what you have here now is 15 questions that would go out to a good, solid group of people. I know, somebody said 100 at this one point, but it's not 100. It's, this survey would go out to senior leadership team at the district level, central office staff, principals, or like K-12 administrators, which 36, that says 36, so that's like principals, assistant principals...
And directors.
And directors, okay. Then presidents or representatives from each of the collective bargaining associations, that's 13, so that includes also the two paragroups that are not unionized would also have representation. So, I don't know, we're looking at like probably 60 or so people that would get the survey that you have. And it originally was all like handwritten, but when we realized the number of people, we needed to go to like the rating scale. And so the idea would be that this would go out, I think that April timeline, March or April? I didn't print off the timeline. And it would go out to those people. So this is not board feedback, which has always historically been almost all board feedback. So the survey would go out to those people. Then there's part two, which would be the boards doing evaluation of the goals, which we've always done. And then the superintendent evaluation committee would then take both pieces. And there's like a summary template that we would prepare, so...
I feel like that's really helpful, and having it like... I feel like that's really helpful and having it like, we can use the data so much easier if it's, you know.
It's got some objective, right?
Handwriting.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But it has, you know, an opportunity at the end to, for comments. You know, I mean, I've been a part of this process for a really long time, um, and it's looked different every single year that I've been a part of it. And our hope is that this would be, like, we're spending a lot of time on this, that it would be something that we would use for, for some period of time. And, you know, we, um, feel really strongly that we wanted the, the teachers involved in the process. And so, um, that, that was an add. So I don't know. Any comments, thoughts, feedback? The plan is for all of the boards to look at this, um, then to go back to the committee with any sort of final edits. And Esther has seen this. I don't know, Chris, if she went over it with you guys or?
We meet on Wednesday.
Okay. So we met with Esther a couple of weeks ago, uh, and, um, I think she thought that it was a lot. But when she realized that it was really just fifteen questions in a rating scale, that sort of, you know. My only thought, you know, currently is just, um, that the fifteen questions are all aligned with sort of the focus areas of the leadership competency and, and our areas. But, um, I sort of would like to see the questions kind of categorized. So that.
They kind of flow. Here's your.
So they flowed and also so we can say, you know what? We're doing great in, you know, academic excellence, right? That wouldn't necessarily be a category, but you know, like that these set of questions like are focused on student perform, like district performance. And like, we're doing great there, but, but we're, you know, there, where there's room for some improvement maybe is in sort of, you know, operational leadership and I'm making it up.
Yeah.
Be very clear.
But if they are, then you can see that more.
Right, that you could kind of see it more clearly. So that's really my only thought from here.
You could group them, uh, like, you could be like, I want to see question one and four and seven together. When you're doing your analysis of your group, right? Or do you think it would be helpful to have that?
You could.
As like you're taking the survey, it's like mentally, you're like, okay, I'm thinking about the same thing.
Right.
Can I ask a question about this question? Number three, the superintendent provides innovative and appreciative.
Appreciative, it's supposed to be. That, I had that. Yep.
It's like, I don't understand. Is that a term I don't know? Appreciate.
The.
No, there's a couple little typos in here too.
Question for the second line and decis, decisions should be plural, I think, right? Engage in challenging conversations and decisions in order to disrupt.
Yep.
And there's just, this is like, I feel like I'm channeling Brian, but it's not minutes, so I can like.
We need to, he's not here.
Um, but it's, they're double numbered.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, well, that's probably because I printed it or because I down, you know, it's in a Google form. And I, but yeah, I will check with that. I will check the, the, yes. No, I think, so this, we just got this today, um, and so I do, there were a couple little like sort of tweaks that weren't like, um, really content related that I.
No, I really like the idea and having like that many people take it, it's like listening to the voice of people who might not ever feel comfortable, like.
Right.
Giving feedback.
So one thing, is this going to be given out as a Google form?
It will be, yeah.
I think there's some concern I've heard amongst staff that it's not anonymous, even though you say it's anonymous because you have to in, input who you are to do it.
So, yeah, and so we've talked to Heather about this and I think Heather has the language to, like, because I think there are settings that, that protect that. And, you know, I mean, the other, I mean, we want it to be anonymous for sure and, um, but I think that the other thing is, is that for, for me personally, like it, when we've been looking at the design, is that, uh, I really, really did not care for the process over the past year of it not being transparent that we were evaluating a superintendent, like it's just open. Like, that's why we've had Esther be part of all, like, hey, you have a really high leadership job and you get evaluated. Like, it, that's just part of this. Um, and my, my sort of general gut is that like, I'd rather be comprehensive and conservative in how we're evaluating and then say, oh, we had more data than we actually really needed this year. Like, maybe we can cut a little bit, but I think as a joint board that we have been remiss in our job of doing a good job at this over the past few years, and I would rather do a really good job at it. And then be like, okay, maybe we did a little bit more than we needed to do. But I think that the community told us what they expected of us and what they wanted in a leader and it's our job to make sure that we have that.
I also think it's too long. I think, you know, that it's not, you know, people are, are evaluating their boss and I think that people love to do that, right? But I'm just wanting to make sure.
Yes, that it's anonymous, right?
Like anonymous, but it's also helpful to know, like, okay, this school or this group of, this like group of employees has a very different opinion than, you know what I mean?
Right.
Three people from Swayze School said this when no, like, what's going on there? So like anonymous to a person maybe, but like it would be helpful to have that data like by, like, okay, the parish said this, that's different than the, like, um, group level identifiers.
People said this or like, yeah, if there's a trend among a specific subset of people.
So the question is then whether we put a demo, some demographic questions.
Like a group level identifier of like, I'm part of this group. I don't know.
That's interesting.
Because then it's like.
But we're going opposite here, right?
But it could be binary, it could be, do you work in the central office or not? Right? Like, because I feel like.
Well, it has to be identified, but it, can you, can you ask demographic questions that still don't identify the person? Like, are you a principal? What school do you, are you at? Right, that would be too identified, but like, are you, you know, are you in administration? Are you?
Well, you could break it out by these three things, right? Like you said, SLT at the district level, and like a bunch of you, you said numbers. Central office staff and then representatives from all the CDAs, so you would know within a pool. But you wouldn't know specifically who's that one.
And would that be like comfortable? You know what I mean? Like, would you guys be like?
It would only be, be really necessary if there were like bipolar answers and you were like, hmm, is this like, you know, like she's getting twos or fours, right? And then like, is it amongst a group or is it just different personnel?
Maybe that's not worth.
I'll bring it up.
I mean, it might not be worth it.
Yeah.
Do it like this for now, and then if we see that, if we see, we're like, wait, there's, there's this weird spectrum of like really, really high, high and low, right? Like, is there any?
It's not that, I mean, it's like, you basically, it's like one through three. I mean, I know it says one through four, but one is, I don't know. And so.
It's not, it could just be you are like.
But if there's a lot.
A nicer survey taker than, like, you know, it could just be personalities too.
Well, we could also evaluate that if we get data that's like, ooh, I feel like we need another, we need more data points to figure out what's going on here.
Any other thoughts, feedback? Okay. So, um, I would say that probably by March, it would be finalized. If not before then.
Yeah, it's really good.
All right. Policy. Brian said that, uh, there was not any really substantial conversation over and above what Heather, um, captured on the summary here. So I don't know, Chris, if you have anything to add?
Just add a couple of comments. Dan or Kim, you want to share? Sue did share a couple of comments. You want me to read those out?
You go ahead.
Sure. So, you're welcome. So the BTA is asking for clarification on policy CHCA. If there are updates made to faculty handbooks, then the BTA should be represented and input, uh, changes, uh, are approved or implemented. That's one thing they'd like to ask is that they're included before any changes are made. So I don't know if you want to bring that back to put in here or have that suggestion in that policy. And then the second que, it was a question on policy JH and it was at what point should social services be involved and how would that be documented? Those are the two pieces of input from the BTA.
I mean, that was, I had a question on that on the truancy line anyway, because everyone in the school is a mandated reporter, so like.
Correct.
If there's a, like, okay, there's something's going on here, you would go to DHHS before the five truencies, right? Like, if you're like, okay, there's like.
Yeah, if there's something that would trigger, uh, mandated reporting, that's the first step after.
And so is this, this is not saying five truant, like, app or whatever triggers that, it's just, that's a tool people can use in that situation.
Correct.
But they would have to use that even without the absences.
Correct.
So do we, so let's talk about the JH first then. So Megan, do you want it added in there?
I mean, it says something in it, such, such instances shall be managed case by case.
What, where are you at?
On JH, like at the very bottom. The principal shall follow all guidance provided through New Hampshire, DHHS, whatever, blah, blah, blah. And so it's basically, there's nothing in it saying like, because it is probably like a case by case thing.
So you're comfortable with where it is?
It's just interesting. So if, if you'd only have to have a documentation from a doctor if you've been gone for five consecutive days is what it says. Otherwise, the, it's excused if the parent says my kid was sick. That would be considered an excused absence?
It's, it looks like it says it's considered as, as absence if the parent lets them know that the child's not going to be here and says a reason.
But there's somewhere in here that talks about extended absences.
Yeah, it does say.
Like it, five or more days. Different category.
Five days in a row. You need a note from the, from the hospital or the doctor.
Like, I feel like that should move into the excused absence. Line, not in the truant, because you wouldn't. Like that paragraph.
We have a planned absence form?
I was just going to ask about that.
No, we don't.
Is it called pickup?
Strike that paragraph.
Yeah. Because it says in here.
Well, it also doesn't say what happens.
It's just, it's new language, you know, it's, it's.
But there's no.
But is that a pro, that's a new process then, because it says when a student's planning to be out at a later day, date.
And for any length of time.
Family vacation, out of suit funeral, state funeral, college visit, a planned absentee form shall be filled out and submitted to the school's principal.
Right, but what happens if they don't? Nothing.
But I mean, like, we do that on pickup patrol, right?
This is more for.
People, but he's, well, the, with the current policy, if someone says they're on vacation, it's an unexcused absence. Just because they say they're on vacation doesn't mean.
That it's excused, right? Right.
Would I call them truant? Not in my definition.
But in this definition, it would be.
Right.
But it looks like I, well, I'm guessing based on the references, that most of this language is based on RSAs.
And this definition, if they say we're going to be out on vacation, it would be excused because it just says and provides a reason. The absence will be documented as excused.
As long as it's only a one week vacation. If it goes longer than five days.
You're out.
Then you need the doctors.
Well, I mean, that's the reason why you don't have like social services as an automatic part of this plan, right? Because you're not, they're not on a, they're on a ten day vacation, you're not calling social services.
That's no way to make friends.
So when I keep my kids out sick, I'm so bad about calling. When people call, I'm like, your kids aren't at school. I'm like, yeah, they're vomiting.
I always.
Somewhere.
Call, I'm like.
No, I appreciate it. And I'm always like, oh, cute.
That's exactly. I'm like, I forgot, sorry. So, so it, it sounds like, I guess there's two questions here. Do we have any changes from what the policy is that we want to add? And if not, then we can approve it, but it sounds like perhaps there's some like logistical, like process things, because it's maybe a little different than
what is happening.
What is happening? But I guess, I mean, are you part of these conversations, Chris?
So each member of senior leadership has a certain number of policies they go to. I was not part of these.
Okay.
So I think this was Ellen that brought these up. I'll do technology in March.
I mean, I do like this pair, the last paragraph, which basically gives some discretion to the school, right? That even if the, if the kid is chronically excused, right, if it's becoming a problem, that's, you know.
A problem.
It's a problem. It does, it doesn't, you know, if you're, if, if the kid's out a million times because they're sick, then what's going on? If the kid's out for vacation a million times or if the kid is like, has legitimate issues, then that, it kind of gives discretion to the school. So it's, it doesn't really define, like, once they've been out this many, unexcused versus excused. Like, even if they're excused, if it's, if there's a concern, then this graph is.
And Sue's feedback was what?
She just, at what point does social services get involved? And I think that's covered in that last sentence.
Yeah, I feel like that's as specific as it needs to be.
All right. So do we want to approve this one?
Yep.
All right. So approve policy JH as is. Right?
Yep.
Somebody want to second that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now let's go back up to CHCA. And that is the approval of handbooks. And so what the BTA feedback is, is if there are changes to the handbook, that they should be part of that approval process? Is that?
The BTA representation and input before changes are approved or implemented.
To input.
But bind, binding input or just?
For.
An opportunity to provide?
So interesting, the last, um, statement says all handbooks shall be approved prior to publication by the board and or superintendent or designee. So if it's by the board, then there's always representation at the board meeting, right?
They'd always have the C, well, they would see the policy before it goes, but not the handbooks. BTA always gives input on their policies.
But this says that we have to approve.
And that's a new process, too.
New process.
So, or we don't, but we, or the superintendent or you, or designee.
Correct.
So, but if, if it's approved by us, then there would be the ability for the, for the parent teacher, parent, that, excuse me, the teacher association to, to.
So if we just struck the, but then what, that would let.
Do we really want to have to approve every handbook?
And that is probably done over the summer.
Uh, typically your June meeting is when we present any changes for next year. That's how I've done it in previous districts. We've not followed that practice here.
I'm okay with not doing that.
We haven't had a ton of changes in the handbook, quite, to be quite honest. I mean, during the, during the COVID days, we changed what dismissal and arrival look like, so we put that in the handbook. Arrival and dismissal times, that type of stuff. And there's a family handbook and.
And an employee.
Stat, an employer's.
I mean, is the handbook, I'm putting you on the spot, but are you comfortable that the handbook is like up to date with current rules and practices? Yeah.
Yeah, because we just did a huge work right before Heather.
So.
Always tweaking, you want to read and make sure the language looks right. We haven't changed a lot of, and again, that's not so much policy, that is practices.
Right.
For those stakeholders, for the.
Right. And so then this is my other question, it, which is practice versus. And so, then, this is my other question, which is practice versus policy. But like, I mean, our practice is that the BTA gets all of the policies before we approve them, so that they can provide feedback. Is that written in policy anywhere, or is that just because that's the relationship we want?
I believe it was in our, one of our contracts.
Okay.
And as far as this goes, we don't need to, we're not asking for any input on the student parent, like, handbook, just on the faculty handbook.
Okay. Is there anything in your contract about reviewing of handbooks? No. I mean-
Can we just add a line into this that says, with-
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree, I, the B- they should review, both unions should review the, an employee handbook before we approve any changes, right?
Honestly, the student one, too, I would think, like, at least the opportunity to.
Can we just say, to be approved by any collective bargaining units?
Well, it doesn't have to be approved, they have to provide feedback.
Reviewed.
Reviewed.
Sorry, yes. Or have, they have the option to review?
The district-
They're not interested in-
So, the principals of each school in the district shall issue an employee handbook and a student family handbook. Content of all handbooks shall conform with board-approved policies. All handbooks shall be approved prior to publication by the board and/or superintendent or designee.
So, can we just say?
After, like, review?
I just said, yeah.
By, shall be approved.
Or, all, how about all handbooks should be provided, all changes should be provided to-
CBA leadership?
For review.
For review, prior to-
Prior to approval.
Approval?
By-
The board or superintendent or designees.
Not, not their approval.
If we put this right after the first sentence, "The principal will seek input from the BTA before any edits are provided to the school board or superintendent for approval."
Does that resolve that?
The cover it?
And a question on our handbook, just cuz I've never really thought about it before, is like, all of these policies, we've created, like, a kind of gender neutral, like, use pronoun review, like, have we done that in our handbook?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I just have, I don't know that I-
Also, we changed, uh, we changed parents to parents, guardians, caregivers.
Okay. Like, they're all-
Yeah.
Could you just send me a, the most recent copy of the student family handbook and the faculty?
Is it on the website?
Family one is.
The family one is.
Not.
It's not?
The family handbook was.
Okay.
You couldn't find it on there?
I just revamped our website, and I don't know why, and I'm not a fan yet, so.
I'm the one that's connected.
But I'll send, I'll, I'll send it to the whole board, what the family handbook is, yeah.
Maybe I need to clarify that.
All right, so, um, so, let's make a motion to approve CHCA as amended.
I'll make a motion to do that.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, policy's done, board member?
Before we move on, Allison, just kind of withdraw, make a motion to withdraw JHR, because we covered it by revamping JH.
Okay.
I make a motion to withdraw JHR.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, any men, board member queries?
There was-
I didn't get anything.
Not, like, specific, but with the Alma, like, people were confused, some people got the two-hour delay notification, some people didn't, which I think you guys knew.
We are working on that issue right now. We did get feedback that some people didn't get it, the other thing is that there was about a five to seven-second pause before the message came on, so people, some people hung up before the message came on. So, we have tech, tech services looking at who didn't get contacted, some of it, there was no phone number in the contacts, therefore, you wouldn't get the call. We also realized that it only went through a call, and it did not do a call and email, so in the future, we'll do call and email, so that covers it.
And it didn't leave a voicemail.
Didn't leave a voicemail.
Yeah, it got Rich in trouble last night, cuz he didn't answer the home phone, and then it called my cellphone, and it didn't leave a voicemail. And so, I, then we had to go on the parent forum to see what the message was.
The message also said, "This is Dr. Asbell," but it's not her. Made me laugh, but-
And SAAU 16.
Students got an email.
Yes, the high schoolers did give an email. But just, I mean, that's-
Okay, so, that's, we gotta clean that up.
Yeah.
So, we are in the process of-
This is your job this year, isn't it?
I just make the calls, I don't put in the information, so, I made the call last night at 9:45 after-
I actually have to say, I was like, why did I have to come at 10 o'clock? And I was like, I, I actually won't, I won't get Chris on this one.
No, I just wanna say-
You can do it at 5 o'clock if you'd like, Allison.
Thank you, thank you.
9:45, I knew we could not open schools.
So, what changed, because this wasn't an issue, whatever the last time we had to do it was?
Uh, well, we have a lot less plow drivers across the state.
No, 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 I mean, like, what changed?
The phone-
Why did it not work?
I don't know, so that's why I'm asking.
You did the same things, the-
We have done, yeah, so we are gonna investigate why it did not.
All right.
Just comment on it not working, I don't know if it's ever worked. Some, some years I'll get, like, six phone calls.
Yes.
I feel like that's what I always-
I, we got that, one for each kid last year.
Yeah.
And you have six kids, so that's your problem.
A little bit quirky.
Just to be on the safe side, and I don't wanna confuse people, and maybe I have to rethink this, if we know that it's a two-hour delay, and I get the official word, that I'll send an email out to all staff and families. But I don't want them, then, with their question, "Did you hear that the school was closed?", they say yes, yeah, to mine, but not to the way it's supposed to go out.
Right, I don't know, that's, that's a, that's a question for you, Chris, I think.
Yeah, it should come, it should come from the central office, if we're calling all schools, if it's just your school, then we would work with you, but that really should be a-
The bonus is that it didn't come from Oregon this year.
Yeah, it was in SAAU-
It was SAAU 16, so that part was improved.
I just don't want, I don't, I just don't want people hearing it.
Yeah, no, I-
3:30 in the morning for work, and nobody here.
Right.
Where a kid gets chopped off, cuz-
Okay. Um, community engagement events, um, the only thing is, so, January, we talked about it being an article about the budget, solar, and the survey.
I did the survey in the, for this one that's coming out right now, is that what you mean?
Yeah, the, oh, the, okay, so you hit the December 15th deadline, okay. So, and that's been, I think, pretty well communicated, do you know what the participation is so far?
I'm not sure what the participation is at this point, um, but hopefully, it's been out there.
It's very short.
We've had over 600 responses to this point.
Oh, pretty good.
That's pretty good.
So, we continue to monitor it every day, so we got about 600, short period of time.
Um, so, that really, that, letty goes to you then, uh, for a newsletter article about budget.
Okay.
And ideally, solar.
Okay. Do you have any more guidance than that?
Well, I mean, we wanna say when the hearings are.
Will we know-
Generally-
When the solar hearing is?
Uh, so, we'll talk with the bond bank on Thursday.
Bond counsel on Thursday.
Bond counsel, we'll get some ideas of the timeline, so I can shoot out and talk with Allison about times that we'd wanna run a public hearing.
So, would you know before Monday?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Can we put, like, a QR code, like, if, can we put a QR code to the solar presentation?
Yes, we can do everything.
You know what I mean, like, in the space we have, cuz then it's like, to learn more, this was presented in for public hearings.
Yeah, I think that if we have, you know, a paragraph that just kind of highlights the deep, you know, the budget warrant, cuz this will come out, oh, well, this will come out early February, so, and they don't vote until March. But it should have our, it, it's, I don't know, the timeline, if there'd be another newsletter article that came out before we voted in March or not. I think they usually get it out in time for that, but-
Yeah, I mean, it could go either way, depending on, like, the mail.
So, yeah, so, I mean, just a highlight of, about what the budget is, and that it's been recommended by both, uh, and what the dates are for the meetings, and the fact that Swayze's proposing doing a solar project. And here's a link to the presentation that has been given five times in the community. And these are the-
It will be given again at this public hearing?
Yeah.
So, you should come.
Yeah, I think that's good.
And then, it's like, more, the presentation can't get out there.
Will we know when the public hearing is, though?
Yeah, that's why I was just asking, they'll know by Friday, it sounds like, Thursday. And that email's not due till Monday.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to send it around to the board before I officially publish it, or just go?
It's up to you, I usually send my articles to Chris and Ron to take a look at.
That's not about it, yeah.
I'm happy to take a look at.
Okay.
All right, budget committee?
The budget committee continues to meet every Monday, except when I'm here for, at the joint board meetings. Uh, the budget committee approved the school budget, six to one, I think.
Yeah.
That's it.
When is the-
The public hearing is on the 12th.
Of February.
Yes. This is not really budget committee stuff, but the two things that I, so, the insurance letter. Let me put that face. The town sent us a letter to ask the insurance company if we could look into pooling. The board has to talk about that, decide if we wanna do that or not.
Well, you also have to talk with Heather, cuz I'm not sure that, that, you can legally do that, there are two different municipalities that are working on that. So, that was my recommendation, is that before you do any of that conversation, Heather needs to be, cuz she's the one that deals with all benefits, and there is, I know she did talk with-
When would she do that? When would she look into that?
It's, we can have someone, if you want, to have a conversation with her, so if the board wants to select someone to reach out to Heather.
I'll have a conversation with her. And so, the question is, the town wants to see if there's partnership, if we can all do benefits together.
If we would both benefit from having, yes, because the pool would be larger for both of us.
Well, it, it wouldn't be, it would be larger for the town, and it would become smaller for us.
No, it would become larger for us.
We're SAU-wide.
No, well, no.
We're just-
We are SAU-wide.
We are SAU-wide, and we're part of-
If we dropped the SAU.
Health trust, right? So, we would not-
But the town is also part of Health Trust. This is where I don't know what any, but like-
I think it was just a query on feasibility, if there was any feasibility of merging.
But in order to do that-
But it's not us, it's SAU.
No, it was literally us.
Right, but we would have to leave the SAU-
If that's the case, then it may not be feasible.
To do it, like, like-
But I think to ask the question, my understanding was that, in order to ask the question, they have to sign a letter saying that we just wanna ask the question, and we have to sign a letter saying we just wanna ask the question. But maybe that is not correct.
So, I did bring it to Heather before the break, so she was working on it, but I, I think-
Okay, I'll talk to Heather.
Simply ask Allison to see if it's feasible.
And then, the other thing, which is also not really budget committee, but it is budget-related, there is, uh, New Hampshire has $4.6 million of grant money, um, that is being distributed through the Rockingham Planning Commission. So, I don't know if that's something you wanna look into for the solar project, I'm going to an info meeting on Wednesday. The only thing that we would need to do is apparently have a, quote, "Priority Climate Action Plan", which I don't know what that means, it's one of the reasons I'm going to the meeting on Wednesday. But if we could get some grant money towards our solar project, that feels like it would be good.
There's, a municipality in Derry also just had congressionally-directed spending, cover like a huge chunk of the solar array, which that's like a longer, you apply in like March, April, May, and like a year and a half before you actually get the money, but isn't interesting.
So, I was gonna go to that meeting. Get more information.
Cuz that's just where the count-
I know more.
Should be.
It's, it's, yeah, it's, um-
It's probably, um, COVID funds.
It's like a random thing that somebody was like, oh, right, the school's doing a thing, you should go to this meeting.
Sure.
That'd be amazing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the, I don't know, I'm gonna turn it in front of you.
Uh, the communications and engagement committee.
The communications and engagement committee is putting out a survey right now, everyone should do it.
Six hundred responses.
We have six hundred responses. Do it, and then we're meeting once we get that, at, we're basically giving it a full month, and so, we'll get, meet again at the end of the month. And I put in the Brentwood newsletter, so everyone in Brentwood will have the QR code.
I put it in the stores.
And, say it again?
I put it in my newsletter.
Yeah, I saw that as well, thank you.
Yeah, but once it comes out in the newsletter, you're gonna double that six hundred.
Here's hoping.
All right, wellness committee, there's no updates. Molly, you're up.
All right, thank you for signing the manifests, I have those, we just needed a quorum, so, sorry. In your pack is a current year financial, so the change from last month is an additional $63,284 in cupboard, or actuals. Um, I did list what that makes up, it is a wide majority, or wide variety, I should say, of different things. Um, did anyone have any questions?
I was happy to see the downs.
Yeah, that's always good.
I don't have a question, but on your table on this side.
Table on this side, yep.
It says 2023, it should be 2025.
Oh, sorry.
That guy was like, am I reading this wrong?
That's okay. Sorry, yep, I need to-
He probably just copied it from last year's form.
I did, I copied it from last year's form, and I, we haven't really used this, because that's going to be the next bullet point, is how much you wanna put in the trust funds.
Ready.
So, did anyone have any questions before we move on?
I didn't have any questions.
Okay, great. Um, so, also, included in your board pack, I believe, if I can find it, um, oh, right behind it, is the draft warrant. So, I did put X's in the spots where we wanna decide on the money, and then I'll go back and put the dollar values. Um, this is the exact same language as before, except for Article Four, which is Dr. Andruski's recommendation of technology funds, uh, trust funds. And creating one for unanticipated expenditures like we've seen for the access points.
So, those weren't unanticipated, right? You had a, you had a figure-
Yep.
That you knew was gonna happen.
Yeah, so, part of the, doing the tech audit this year, we found, you know, each office, about $30,000 that we had to put in for access points, switching, cabling, wiring, that usually occurs every five or six years. So, that five to six years, you see that jump of 30 to $35,000, so the recommendation for Brentwood is to put about at least $10,000 a year. So, in year five, when that comes up, you'd have a pool of $50,000 that would not touch the budget, and therefore, we can continue to have just our, our software and hardware costs that we put into our budget each year. So, that was the recommendation from Mr. Hills and myself, after looking at the budgets in one way that we could keep our budgets without having major spikes in year five or six, cuz we knew, know that's the lifespan of your access points, and when cabling, wiring, switching is usually needed to be repaired.
Um, and I also wanna remind everybody, um, that, the, well, the, the order of this is important as well, because at the end of the year, if you only have $10,000 left over, it will go to the first one that comes from unassigned fund balance.
So, um, so, just going through here, so, special and, uh, we're at 172, 173, and Chris, you said that that's going up to, the goal is 275?
Correct.
So, we still have 100,000. Um, and it, the goal for that fund is going up because of cost.
Cost and transportation, yep.
And so-
What did that start at?
Last year, we were about 250,000, and then this year, with the spike of about 30% in cost for transportation, and then out of district placement, that's why new number of 275 would cover the cost of one student with significant needs at an out-of-district placement.
It's not for a specific student, it's just based on if a student moved in, what is a good ball.
The goal, right.
Correct.
The goal.
But that could be gone in-
A minute.
Six months.
Right.
At 275 would be the cost of a year for one student out of an out-of-district placement, specialized in- At two seventy-five would be the cost of a year for one student out of an added district placement, specialized instruction.
Right. So we're still a ways from that, so. And then safety and security, uh, we are at one forty-nine, um, and our goal was always one fifty. And so, I guess.
Fifty, fifty thousand.
I'm sorry.
That's alright.
I was looking at, I was thinking maintenance, yeah, sorry, maintenance isn't even on here. Um, because we didn't think we needed it, which is where I was going. Um, safety and security is at fifty thousand.
What is that, what are we aiming to have that be?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, so no, so we can remove this warrant.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, because we didn't do anything to maintenance last year because that is also.
We were already at our target.
And we didn't draw anything from either of those.
No.
No, we talked about.
We talked about it, but we didn't.
But we never needed to, yeah, okay. So, in the past, so that leaves us with two funds to put money towards. In the past, we've done ten thousand. Or we've done thirty thousand, I think, in the past.
I think you've done various amounts.
A lot of years, we did ten thousand each and then we s- switched it around last year because we didn't need to do maintenance, so. I guess like my, I think what we talked about last week, Chris, that twenty thousand for special ed and ten thousand into the technology. Um, to stay consistent with sort of the general amount we've been taking.
It's arbitrary.
I feel like, I, yes. I, the, the fourth, like, solar warrant is gonna be such a giant number that like. Is, I don't know, taking, adding less than thirty to these. Is there a benefit to that, to saying, okay?
Well, these aren't, these aren't raising funds, they're just using.
They're using the unreserved fund, but when somebody hears it and they're not, they're here, they're seeing like thirty, fifteen, you know, twenty, fifteen, whatever it is. Eight hundred and seventy thousand, like, that's gonna be for somebody seeing it that night for the first time, who doesn't understand the process of that.
Yeah, and you're right, it's not raising more, but you also give them less back. So when you give less back, you in turn have to raise more.
And not that the like five grand is gonna really move a needle, but it does.
That's funny, because I was actually thinking of going the other direction of putting more in special education, because it makes me really nervous.
Yeah, that, I guess like that's my, you know, like of my seven years on the board, this is the first year that we've really had to talk about special ed. Costs and had to adjust our spending because of it. And so my gut is not to go. Down from the twenty thousand, I would, if, if I had my. My choice, I would go up from the twenty thousand, but I could be convinced at the twenty thousand.
Or even like.
I would say thirty ten. I think doing the ten, I think adding to the technology capital reserve. Makes sense. We know that we're gonna have an expense in five years, we know about what it's gonna cost. The town does a similar thing with the reevaluation. You know, it's gonna be. Twenty-five thousand dollars every, or hundred twenty-five every five years, they just do twenty-five every year. I think that makes sense. And then for me, I think. If we do thirty in the special education trust fund. Then we'll be caught up in three-ish years.
Well, I mean, we, we're not agreeing to thirty a year, we're just talking about this year.
And we could spend it down next year.
This could be zero.
It could be zero.
Right.
Um, the question I have is like, if the solar goes through, right, we're ta- probably talking like three years until we get the tax rebate. Like, next year is gonna be, like, by the time they're installed and we get the check, like, does it make sense to hold? My con- I'm just concerned about it being like a lot of, here's a new trust fund we're asking for, here's the warrant, like, it's a lot of asking for new things. Does the tech capital reserve fund, if we know we have five years, we're gonna get a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar check in three years? Like, do we hold off? On asking for a new trust fund?
You don't have to ask the board in three years, which may or may not include all of us.
But in five years, we have no choice, because. Our access points don't work.
There's always a choice.
I just, my concern is like. There's a lot of, even though it's like ten grand, that's two dollars a household, probably, maybe. It's a lot of like. New asks with the solar. And the budget going up, even though it's all need based and. But yes, I like the need for all of it.
But which way are you gonna vote?
I was, that was the start of my statement. You know I always have an opinion, I, um. I feel like. It probably makes sense to do, uh, do this, do it, but do small amounts. Like not go beyond the twenty thousand, I mean, I, I, it's kind of. I think that the, the tricky thing is, so that, I feel like the, the, there, it's kind of two different. Thought processes, right? The technology is like, we know we're gonna have an expense and we're just paying for it over time, so that we don't have a big chunk. The, um, and I think we can, and I think that that can be explained in that way. Like, this is an, like, a known expense that comes every five years, so we're just trying to, you know, make it so the, that we don't have a big chunk in five years that we have to pay. Um, the special ed is a, you know, is a kind of thing where it's an unknown, right? Like, we could, we could not need it at all, we could. We could next year be like, guess what, we're raising the taxes by a ton because we had four kids who had to go out of place, out of, out of school, out of district. But, so that's just more of a cushion, so I understand the, the like want to like create, but it's pretty arbitrary, right? To create like enough for one kid to go for a full year, like, we don't have one kid who needs to go for a full year, maybe we'll have five kids that need to go for a full years. You know, maybe we'll have none for the next ten years, you know, we don't know, and so I think just kind of softening that blow.
Like, if we want, if the solar is the priority.
Well. The, solar is a priority, but like. It would be terrible to have our budget frozen.
Yeah.
So we could do thirty and if people feel like that's too much, they can change the number. Right, like that.
What I am hearing is that there is not additional support for going higher than what we've already said. Except for, for, from you, and I hear you.
I could also make the motion to change the twenty to thirty at the meeting.
Well, that would undermine us as a board. I think what we vote on as a board should be what gets presented.
It will absolutely get presented, but I as an independent citizen can also have my own independent opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I would say ten and twenty. Is what I would recommend. And I totally understand the thirty, but I, I just think that's, yeah, it is.
And then, I guess, Megan, what we could do is put the solar, uh. Above.
The solar is gonna go first because it's a bond.
It's gonna go before our operating budget?
Operating has to be first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have to. I can check on that. I don't, I've never actually put a bond on the warrant, so I can double check on that.
Oh, because you weren't here when they did the middle school thing.
I came in right after it happened.
What year was that?
So that would have been twenty nineteen. Yeah, twenty nineteen in the D R portal.
I don't want anything before our operating budget on the warrant articles. Right, I mean, our, you talk about priorities, our priority is to fund the school next year. Then we'll have the rest of these conversations.
The order really only pertains to unassigned fund balance. Like, your operating budget and the solar, that would not be unassigned fund balance.
But we just want the operating above.
Yeah, we just want the conversation to happen. In order of our priorities.
Sure, I, I can check with the Department of Revenue and get back to you on that.
Would have been twenty nineteen, you said?
It was twenty nineteen.
Like the twenty nineteen D R report?
Uh.
That's, that's the thing that always screws me up.
And our. Our bond, we did the bond first and then operating second.
The bond first.
I, I, I do think. I think the CMS bond was first, whether it had to be first, I don't know.
I think it has to be first. But I.
But I, I believe the CMS bond was first. I just don't know if it has to be first.
Yeah.
But I can ask.
And the maintenance is like at where we want it to be?
Yeah.
These roof repairs that we have to do, will they be pulled from that fund?
No.
Be budgeted for them?
Project line.
Okay, so they're. That's not coming from that. Yeah. I mean, my question is less about the special ed trust and more about the tech capital reserve. Because we're putting, if we put, even if we put ten a year, the cost might, like, we, we don't know if that will cut. So just this year with the solar on it, it doesn't make sense, but. It's not like a substantial amount.
Well, I mean, it, and it can be last, so if people.
Yeah.
Are.
Burnout at that point?
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, so we'll wait till Kate comes back to. Take a vote. Um, do we want us, do we have to draft that language for the solar right now?
Uh, I think Molly was gonna get the language and be able to give it to you, right? The number amounts, I think you're good.
Yeah, well, um, I'll have to go and talk on the D R portal to see what their suggested language is. And also see if we can customize it.
Okay, so we just have to vote on a number?
Correct.
So what do we think the number should be?
Not to exceed eight.
I agree.
And I foresee it looking very much like the CMS one.
Alright, so. Do we vote for each of these separately?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Amount you want in there.
What'd you say?
Just the amount you want in there, and, and the order you want, if you want.
Okay, so, do we have to vote on the operating budget?
You've already done that.
Okay, so, alright, so, um. The current Article Two Special Ed.
When did we vote on the operating budget?
Last meeting.
No, we didn't.
You did.
We did. Was it, there was a meeting you were?
No, because I was like, don't we have to vote on this? And you're like, no, just present it.
We voted on it to bring it to the Budget Committee.
Okay.
You voted on the number to bring it to the Budget Committee.
Okay, so, um. Special Ed, so, does everybody want to keep it as the top? Fund?
Yeah.
Okay, and twenty thousand? Is that what the general?
Yeah.
Okay, so would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to. The warrant, the first warrant. Put twenty thousand dollars to the special ed trust.
Okay.
Is that motiony enough?
Sounds very official, your motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're removing safety and security, do we have to, uh, vote to remove that?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Alright, and then the, so Article. Three would become the Technology Capital Reserve Fund. Or potentially four, if the bond is fourth.
That we establish the cap, Technology Capital Reserve Fund. With this language and add ten thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
And then that fund wouldn't be specific to these.
Nope, it could be any.
It could be any, like, every computer got.
Right.
Broke on the same day.
Yeah, good.
And then, um, a, a warrant article for the bond. Um, with language that Molly is going to get to us, that does. Uh, up to, but not to exceed eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Great.
Uh, anybody want to second that?
Wait, didn't I do this?
You did that.
We talked about it in the other meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. You get the call.
Thank you.
Do you want to just do the, uh, school district signature page before you leave?
Oh, the. Oh.
Warrants.
Do you have a copy of it?
Yep, you can have this.
Actually, I have a copy right here, too.
I say not in.
So today is the eighth.
Ron, you're up.
Great, um, we are going to be postponing the S E L conversation. Mrs. McNally is gonna be available for the February meeting.
Okay.
So I'd like to postpone that full conversation, apologies for that change.
Thank you.
Um, last year Pippi came, she did a fantastic job talking about, um, some of the work that she does. And we'll also be talking about the holistic student assessment that was provided for our third, fourth, fifth graders. We're not gonna get crazy about the results, but talking to you a little bit about some trends we're seeing. And also, uh, what we're doing with those trends and the groups that they're creating, so, pretty exciting stuff. Um, we did have Homeland Security come, uh, in December and did an audit. Um, I'm going to share publicly, uh, that document of suggestions and recommendations. I don't know if we want to go to non-public at the end of the meeting and I can share some of the thoughts, yeah, yeah. Uh, I did meet with Rich Kane and we kind of came to some agreements and, um. Homeland Security likes coming to S A sixteen because a lot of the things that they want to recommend are already in place here, so, um. Really good stuff, but there's, um, some slight changes that we can be making that's not going to cost money. Um, some other things that we chat, we do have security cameras throughout the building and outside of the building. Um, when he and I talked about, um. Adding to those cameras, one of the thoughts I had was for the playground, something mounted on the building, so, yeah. Uh, not only people that don't have anything to do with our school and off, school hours, but also during the school day. For safety of our students to see, you know, what's going on with them, if there's an incident that happens, we'd be able to kind of have. A play-by-play, video replay to see exactly who did what to who, so. Um, so that's one of the things we talked about.
Pretty sure we don't want that.
I know.
As some of our other protocols, we'd, um, and again, I really don't, you know, with the cameras rolling, I don't want to really get into details about safety and security. Yeah, perfect. Um, wanna pass out, we'll move on to the next section, which is, um. Kind of an eight-year summary of our state testing. Um, Chris, if you don't mind.
No, no.
Passing stack.
Yeah.
Hi Molly, thank you.
Hi Molly. So, um, can we just take a minute and look at the first page? Um, the first few years was, um, S back. Um. And then it turned to the SAS state testing. Pretty much testing the same kind of standards and competencies. And I was just looking at trends, I found it pretty fascinating that last year. Was almost a, a perfect match to our eight-year average for our state testing, so. The first page is all three grades that take the test combined. Um. And, um, it also shows on this first page, um, and again, when you see these percentages. Um, the way the test is provided or evaluated, there's four tiers. And this is the top two tiers, a level three or four, which is, uh, demonstrating proficiency. So it's not really grade level or who's on grade level, but it's based on who is proficient above proficient. On the state testing and the competency, so that's what the language is and that's what the numbers are.
The goal being a hundred percent, or?
Course, always, yeah. Um, so, and again, when students aren't proficient, they're at a level two or a one. It's rare that we have many students in level one, and even if they're at level two and maybe missed a question or part of a question. That still keeps you as not being proficient, so. It, this, the documents you're reading here, it's not gonna give you a breakdown of any kids that are right on the cusp, I didn't provide that. Um. On the second and third page is a breakdown by grade level of how our students scored in E L A. Writing and reading, uh, and then mathematics. Um, it's, it's a trend statewide, um, that E L A is. Um. Can score higher on, uh, reading and writing than they do in mathematics, so that's the trend you'll see from page two to three. Just a couple of things to point out. Last year, we saw one of the lower numbers when it came to math at uh at grade five. We hadn't seen thirty-eight percent of our students proficient on any of these assessments. If you look back uh a year before they were in fifth grade, that's also the lowest score in the eight years for that particular group. And 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 for that grade level at math, and again, it's also the lowest grade, uh, the lowest proficient average in grade three. And it just kind of went down. If you track that diagonally, you see that group of students, um, they had some struggle. And as the concepts get harder, we need to adjust uh what we're doing. Just to address mathematics, uh, I think we're in year two of having a full-time math intervention person. Math is a a huge focus for our P L Cs and conversations, it's one of the biggest data points that we collect. When we have consultants or when we're sending teachers places, it's on math instruction. We're doing more um math professional development, actually on January twenty-third. Our P L Cs meet each week, every week there's a different topic and for sure, our our math intervention person joins our grade levels. To talk about how those students are doing. The single page that I passed out while we're on this math page, uh, it's two-sided. If we could just quickly look at math intervention, the sheet here. Uh, it shows you the group that we created uh in October and January, a breakdown of total amount of students that are getting intervention. And a total amount of how, what's, how many students are getting enrichment. Some, some grade levels, first, third, and fourth, opted for some enrichment with this person as time, time allowed. We also, after our conversation, I don't know if it was a month ago, we talked a little bit about the data we've been seeing on the state testing. As far as, um, uh, boys scoring higher at Swayze than girls have been scoring higher at Swayze. And, you know, although we don't spend a lot of time differentiating genders, uh, when it comes to most areas. I still think it's an area that we're glad we're bringing to light. So, um, I don't have a lot of answers about why, when I've asked people that same question. Uh, and again, I'm not gonna stereotype, girls do this and boys do that. And one of the responses I got was that girls are sometimes not as apt to participate when they're not feeling comfortable in a sub, in a subject. I'm not saying that's my opinion, that's just some of the feedback that I received. But, uh, right now, as you can see, it, and when we are showing math intervention, um, numbers for boys and girls. You see there's uh sixteen boys, twenty-four girls, uh, in the fall. And now there's fourteen boys and twenty-five girls that are providing intervention. That's based on need. So I think we're still seeing that trend, uh, and that's, and again, we're not saying we have to have an equal amount of boys as girls going to intervention. But, uh, those are the details here. I think not only sharing this, and I've been sharing this as we're having more and more P L Cs, just for people to think about it. Keep people aware of the trends that we're seeing. When talking with Katie Gallo.
Ask a really quick question?
For sure, yeah.
Sorry, in looking at this, this is the, this is the percent that.
Percent of girls that were proficient, percent of boys that were proficient.
It had a three or four on those.
I knew that was over here, I just wanted to make sure that was the same.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And I was like, a couple of times when I was like pulling this chart off the D O E, I was like, all right, what is that, sixteen?
I mean, it's fascinating, if you, I mean, yeah, I mean, if you look at this great, well. Fascinating, not necessarily, but right, but if you look at this thirty-eight percent of of fifth graders last year meeting or exceeding. It's fifty-five percent for males and sixteen for females. I mean, that's a. Like, all of the other grades, it's like a ten or fifteen percent difference, but in that particular grade, it's forty percent difference.
So our, our girls struggled, uh, two years ago in grade four, and then they really struggled in grade five. And again, that's part of that, uh, cusp. And I don't think, I think that sixteen percent of our fifth grade girls last year being proficient in math is not a trend we've seen here. I I I didn't track it for eight years, but it's definitely something for us to be made aware of. Are our girls participating? Are they feeling?
But the numbers are uniformly lower by like.
For sure.
Yeah, like ten, fifteen percent.
And I think the, the N is high enough to say this isn't like an outlier, like, just like, you know, that there's, there's enough kids in the sample to say that it's not. Oh, just these, you know, it's just this group of girls are, are, you know, just don't happen to be like as good in math. You know, because it's, you know, it may be that that group of girls doesn't, isn't, but like, it's across the board at Swayze that it's, you know. And there's no reason to think that, you know, three hundred girls would be doing less well in math than three hundred boys, you know?
Right, so, um, I can't even venture a guess on why that is. What I can do is make us aware of, this is what the data is showing us, how do we address it?
Yeah, exactly.
Um, when having conversations with our assistant principal Katie Gallo, we thought it'd be a perfect case study for our D E I group. Uh, as we get together on a, on a monthly basis to talk about inequities and what. Come up with some solutions about, um, you know.
What it could be.
How are we making math accessible, uh, for boys and girls alike? Again, I've, I've seen more than enough math lessons to know that girls are not being excluded or not, uh, held to uh, uh, the same standard as the boys in our buildings. So it's, it would be just, it would be good to open the topic up. So also be sharing this at a full staff meeting.
Yeah, I know when we poked around last meeting, it's like a notch Swayze thing, too, it was like a lot of. Exeter, I think, was the closest, but all of the other districts had similar.
Disparages, yeah.
And I mean, I, I mean, this is just a one program example, but in, you know, when you guys did robotics club last spring, right? That was a sign up, right? Anybody could sign up, and I, I don't think there was a single girl in that, in that group.
But that might be why, like, if you know you're gonna be the only girl in that group, you're not gonna sign up.
Um, is twenty twenty-one, uh, it's after twenty twenty-one that, that I ready was implemented?
No, we had been piloting it, but I think full boat.
Twenty nineteen?
Yeah.
But like, I mean, Anna didn't do I ready math at here, I don't think. And so, and she left here in twenty-one.
We would have had it in twenty twenty.
Did the younger, like.
It would have, okay, all right, I was just curious where that fell in this, in that, in this.
Cause we did in twenty twenty.
Because like in.
Started in the lower grades.
In grade five, in nineteen and twenty-one, you, it, you're almost even, but that's the only place that that's, that's true.
So as far as the split between boys and girls, I think it's a topic that we'll keep alive as we're meeting not only with our uh D E I group. But also within our P L Cs, keep monitoring, uh, how we're doing not only on this. And, you know, the state testing is a one and done. I would like to see what this data looks like as far as our screeners and I.
I was just gonna say, can, yeah, can you look at the in-house data that you have and see what you have for?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, the, one of the things that we can help prepare, not only kids that we know that are already struggling in math, but all of our students is. The state testing format is different than anything we do during the regular year. And I don't wanna spend a lot of time, uh, doing test prep, but I do want students to be extremely familiar with the format. And the types of questions that may be asked of them, and then to embed that into our instruction as well. So our third, fourth, and fifth grade classrooms are gonna, um, not only do practice tests, but an interim state test.
It's an interesting question, like, if there's some differential in like computer use in boys and girls, you know, because of the format of the testing. And it versus, you know, some other testing that, that there is, if, you know, if the other testing shows it more even versus just like familiarity with, you know.
They're both on the computer, but, uh.
Yeah, but I, I, I don't know if we have any testing which is not, or like, you know, that would be a different type of format where there's some kind of like cultural difference in, in like familiarity with. Doing something online or something, you know, this is interesting, like, if, if, if the testing, if you were to do the testing on paper, if it would show the same discrepancy. And maybe it would, in which case we say, okay, it doesn't have anything to do with the testing format.
What is, um, I don't, it was a question that I don't have the answer to, which they, you know, most lawyers say don't ever do that, but. What would our national S A T scores look like in mathematics, uh, men and women? You know what I'm saying? Is there a differential there, too? I do not, I don't know the answer to that, too, but I'd be curious to see.
But thank you for keeping it like, talking about it.
Yeah, I really appreciate you divining it out like that, so we can see, that's great.
Yeah.
And I think you're absolutely right, the first step is, is just like stating that there's, that there's something going on. And then, you know, we don't have to know exactly why to start.
Yeah, well, you know, five percent points is bad enough, but when it gets into the teens and sometimes twenty, and this past year, twenty-five plus. That's.
Well, even like the intervention numbers are, kind of follow that, right?
Right.
The sixteen, so it's like. It's interesting.
Thanks, Ron.
Yeah, um, yeah, and the last pages are, this is just a fifth grade science test, we've always done really outstanding on this compared to the state, too.
I feel like that's the, like, you've always asked for data on the STEAM lab, like, this is it.
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah, yeah.
Cause that takes like the E L A and the math, like, it probably combines it all, right?
No, absolutely, it's all, it's all inquiry and uh problem solving on there, it's not recalling backs.
Yeah.
It's solving something.
You guys don't have this in front of you, but like, basically what it is saying is that, like, Swayze is performing somewhere between like twenty and thirty percent higher than the state. Across all years and all that, so.
Can they see it? Cause we have like copies here.
Yeah.
You're welcome to take them. We have a couple of copies anyways.
I had a, we were on a principal meeting today, and one of the other principals pointed out that our math scores were higher than other elementary schools. I did not point that out to the principals, I would never do that.
Like, I just want to.
But when they, but when they did, you were just like.
Did you?
No, no, but I would if I was wrong. But I.
Saying, I, I would teach the horn.
Again, I, I like staying friends with the people.
My, you know, I sent this to you last week, Ron, I just like, I mean, the data is awesome, right? Like, there, I'm not debating that. I just find it really fascinating, right, when you're looking at, you know, a decent enough number that it fluctuates so much year to year. Like, I just, like, I mean, that, that some years that you can have sixty-two and some years you can have eighty-three percent. Like, and the curriculum is, you know, not changing. Drastically, like, you know, in the email I sent to you last week, I'm like, it just makes my. Brain ask all of these questions, like, what are like the, the factors that are surrounding a particular grade of students? You know, that are, you know, like, is it parental engagement, is it out, like, there's gotta be something else going on. Within cohorts that make that change, right? I mean, because, right, like, Mrs. Woods is teaching math, you know, solid math to fourth graders year after year. And like, the change is.
Not even like horizontal, like, this grades do better in three, worse in four, better in five, or like, that, like, that's not.
Totally, it just like, it just.
Random.
It, it prompts a lot of questions in my head.
Some anomalies in here, too, uh, two years ago, fifth grade students, ninety-four percent of them were proficient in the E L A test, ninety-four percent.
Yeah, that's a lot.
You know, our school average for eight years is eighty percent proficient. You know, in two years, in two years before fifth grade was seventy-two percent. I mean, that's, it's not like, the level and quality of instruction didn't go down, so it's like, you're right, it is fascinating. We, we'd like to see the data line go in a northeast direction, continue to rise over time. Anyway.
I'm curious to see this, this current, this current, uh, fifth grade has been your highest in math for a lot of you. As they've tracked through here, I'm curious to see how they, how they do here, cause that's a big jump.
Eighty-three to sixty-three, what are you talking about?
Well, like, from forty-eight percent to seventy, you know, like.
Yeah, yeah, last year's.
There's fifty-three percent, forty-eight percent, and then seventy-four percent. Yeah, I'm just curious, yeah. Anyways, thanks, Ron, this is great.
Thank you.
We took close public comment just before.
Oh, yeah. Anybody have any public comment before we?
Rowdy crowd.
Yeah, all right. Close public comment at eight oh six. All right, um, voting.
Took care of that.
We got it, yep, um, and our next meeting is Feb, can we put next meetings back on here?
I can do that.
February sixth.
February sixth, yeah.
Sixth.
February fifth. Anything else? So we're gonna go into non-public, is that, yeah, okay, so you wanna make that motion?
And I make a motion that we go into non-public under R S A ninety-one dash A colon three two I.
Let's second that emotion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I always, we'll call, aye.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.